I messaged Molly to see if she wants to join by phone. If she does, we're going to have to use the conference line, which is not set up currently, but we can.
Do we want to just wait for a few minutes to see?
Well, let's go ahead and get started, and then if we have to change it up, we will.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. Exciting day. It is our first regular meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners here this morning on Tuesday, January 11th. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if everyone would stand, we'll go ahead with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as we get started, I'd like to note that we have a couple of people that aren't with us and are joining us by phone. Brady Powers is going to be joining us by phone. He's actually on the line at this point, and we're trying to reach Attorney Hickon and find out if she will be joining us as well. We are together in person today. We do not have an emergency order, so by statute, we need to meet in person. I just wanted to clarify that. And I wanted to make one other comment before we begin. One of our former commissioners, Frank Mo, as we know, has been struggling with brain cancer and has gone into hospice. And just on behalf of Cook County and not only our organization, but all of the people here in our county, I'd like to wish him the best as he goes through this time and wish Sherry as well the best. With that, are there any adjustments to our agenda today? Any adjustments to the agenda? With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. Is there a second?
Sir, Lisa Borg.
Thank you, Commissioner Storey. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. This is time for our public comment. And just to be aware, the guidelines for our public comment is to come forward to the microphone that you see on your left to address the county board in any manner of county concern. And when invited to speak, please speak into the microphone for clarity, sign in and state your name and address. And we'd like to keep public comments to about five minutes, if you could. All right. Any public comments today? Thank you.
Sign in where?
There should be a pen there for you. Thank you.
And just name and address is all we need. Thank you.
I'm actually just writing my name, Graham Ray, and District Four. But anyway, you can look it up if you want. Anyway, my name's Steve Watson. I'm going to -- happy birthday, by the way. Heard it on WTIP. Anyway, I came to talk about the decision to mandate vaccinations for the people from Cook County. And I just wanted to -- and then, or testing. And I just wanted to talk about that a little bit and just voice. So the deal is, if you want to get vaccinated, I think that's fine. It really isn't a vaccination. It's a flu shot because it doesn't provide immunity. And the proof is that your governor was vaccinated, got his booster in October and had COVID in December. And I know two people in Cook County right now quarantining that have had two shots and a booster and have COVID right now. So the assumption that, and there aren't that many things here, the assumption that you're only going to have to test the unvaccinated is an assumption that's false. It's proven. You can look at the NFL. It's all over, everywhere. Just think with your brain. And so if you're going to mandate testing, you need to test everybody because your vaccine doesn't provide immunity. If you were immune, like when you got mumps, you wouldn't need to test them. But it doesn't provide immunity, and it's proven. It's all over. All you do is have to open your eyes and think with your brain. So making that assumption, the second thing I want to say is if it's so infective that it can infect a whole room of people, you don't have to stick a five-inch stick up somebody's nose. You can get it in the first inch of their nose. That's cruelty, and I think, actually, just thinking about it, that's to force people who decide not to, to go get vaccinated because that's mean. It hurts. And it's a wrong thing to do to people. So anyway, if you mandate something, this is an experimental drug. Do you know, I have Pfizer information. This is Pfizer's own information. 1,200 deaths, bunch of abortions, whole bunch of other things, just from Pfizer vaccine of their own data, and you're going to mandate that to people in Cook County? If you -- okay, I'm going to go back before I talk about that. The first time I was driving and I hear that we have to protect the people of Cook County, I never, not once, and I've lived here since the 80s, early 80s, 1980, I never have thought that the county commissioners were responsible to protect me, except with law enforcement and with sanding and plowing the roads. And now that I drive a lot, I've had some harrowing experiences on some bad ice, you know, that I'd rather get protected from that. You can't. Biden, just last week, said the federal government can't do anything to support this. So why would you think Cook County could? They have trillions. You have a few million. They can't do it? All this information, it's like, so my big thing is, right now, division is the problem. The people of Cook County are wonderful. They work together. I've thought, you know what? If there's ever something major happened, when Harley was fishing, I mean, and there was shortage of food, guess what? I think you could get fish. They'd just drop their nests, go down there and get it. People would work together and help each other here, and that's a good thing for Cook County. But division, dividing, the country's trying to divide over patriotism, or conservatism, or Christian, and now it's dividing over vaccine, and they're using junior-high peer pressure tactics to do it. That's how Hitler got in. He blamed the Jews, and look what happened. You're running the very same playbook that that happened. Solomon in the Bible, in Ecclesiastes, says everything's a wheel in a wheel, where the wheel has come around. Okay? We have, if we do the same thing, we'll get the same result. Look what's happening in Australia. Look what's happening in Canada. They actually have concentration camps, and they're grabbing these people and throwing them in it. What does that look like? That's why we learn history. We don't learn history to learn dates. We learn history to learn what happens when we do these things because they happen again. That's why, you know, what goes around comes around. That's from the Bible. That's why that statement is. So anyway, I'm very concerned. I actually believe, so because these things are experimental, nobody can sue. All these people that these vaccines have hurt, and actually, one person has died from Cook County, right? But I know two people with major heart things from the vaccine, and Tina George just died from blood clots, I think, and that's a side effect of vaccination. Now, I was going to call Dave, but I didn't get home till too late last night, and I didn't have time this morning, okay, to make sure. But those are side effects. That's three. There's probably more. If you start looking into strokes, stroke is a side effect. Look into heart attacks. If you have blood clots and those things happen, you're -- but they're all hidden. It's not being reported, it's hidden. It's not being blamed on that, or people would make different choices. Vaccinating kids, they have a one-in-a-million chance or something of dying? Not hardly any have died. And you're going to vaccinate them? You wouldn't vaccinate that. Why would you? It doesn't even make sense to do that. They have a better chance of dying going to school on the school bus than that. So anyway, those are my concerns. Actually, since the government, oh, last thing I want to say, is in 2015, there was started a negotiation between Moderna and the United States of America, one of our offices. It actually was signed, I think, in 2018, and our government owns half of the Moderna vaccination before COVID ever came out. I can bring you documentation if you want it. But anyway, so for the government, that's a conflict of interest. They shouldn't be involved in all, and they sure shouldn't be mandating. But anyway, because it's experimental, nobody can sue. These companies are never going to go regular because they'll lose everything, and they're making billions. They will lose everything. Those 1,200 from Pfizer would take all their money in lawsuits. They'd be bankrupt. So I guess my thing is, if you mandate it, I think, because you're the one signing it, it's a free choice. I'm not against getting vaccinated, or, and I don't care if you do or you don't. What I'm against is mandating it. And personally, I think you need to be all responsible, your house, your fortune, if you do it. If you really want to protect the people of Cook County, back it up with your money. Not the county, you guys.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. We appreciate your words today.
Thanks. Have a good day.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments today? Any other public comments? Anybody on the line?
Nobody on the line, and I've not received any written comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yorki. All right. At this point, we will move on to our consent agenda items. We have a number of items there today. Are there any items that someone would like to pull? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there a second?
Hawkins, support.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hawkins. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. At this point, we'll move on in our agenda to item number four, which is human resources. And we're excited to have with us this morning Leah Exstrom.
Well, good morning.
Good morning, Leah.
So yes, just wanted to give a little informational update as we've had a number of job openings, new hires, and resignations over the past number of months. Let's just say six. Yeah, we're making headway. It seems to be taking up, as it should, a lot of time in human resources, but we've had a lot of good progress, I think, in the last definitely couple of weeks. Social services, just to start there with public health and human services. There were three job openings, and they're still available. We're making progress in two with the eligibility specialist and adult services. We had interviews last week and are moving forward to hiring in both of those positions. So nothing official yet, but going that direction. And then this week with adult in-home support. We're doing that closed on Friday, and we're doing interviews there. We've been working with their merit system to really get some good applicants. So hopefully, they'll be, I don't want to say it too much, but fully staffed soon and making progress in that direction. Another one we're working on is the veteran service officer. We have interviews this week, and then hopefully moving forward in that, as well as the radio analyst position in MIS. So had some applicants there. Another one we're working towards is payroll. We've had interviews the last couple of weeks, and so hopefully, after talking with Brady Powers later today, we might be moving forward in that. So where else? The sheriff's office, they are finalizing some background checks with the deputy position. And so waiting, I know that's kind of a longer process that they need to undertake for that. And then dispatch, that's the other one we're working on filling at this point in time. Let's see. And then our public information coordinator. We're working on interviewing with that with the hospital, so coordinating that. I think, yeah. Administrator Yorki's been working with the hospital to get that interview coordinated. So, yeah, so those are our openings and process right now.
Madam Chair, if I could jump in, I just want to recognize the great work that Leah and our part-time human resources generalist, Kathy Polly, are doing. As you know, Leah started this position at the beginning of November and really kind of jumped in feet-first, and there's so much going on. It's a tremendously difficult time for employers across the country right now. I think we've all heard of the challenges that organizations are facing retaining and recruiting new staff, and we're no different from any other organization. And Leah has really had her hands full, but she's just really gotten off to a running start, and I just want to say I'm really grateful, Leah, for the work that you're doing to help us move forward and to get good people into the organization. Thank you.
Thanks. And we'll continue to work and reach out across the state where we can to try and fill these positions that are harder to fill. And I know we're working on that right now, especially with law enforcement. I think that's tricky. So working with the sheriff and his office to try and fill those positions.
Well, Leah, we appreciate all you do, and we know that our employees have really worked hard because of the shortages. They've covered for other people. They've really dug in, and they're just kind of hanging on by a thread, and we want to recognize and let them know that we appreciate all of them for the hard work that they've done during this really difficult time. And I know as commissioners, we sometimes ask employees to get information or research or things for us, and we're going to try to be very mindful not to add to their workload. And if we have things that we need, information that we need, we'll go through Administrator Yorki to get that and make sure that he works with department heads so that we're not putting any greater burden on our employees than they are. They're just doing a fabulous job.
Yep. Yeah, people have been asked a lot in the last number of months.
Absolutely.
So appreciate that. Otherwise, yeah, we're just moving forward. And other aspects as well, there's the pay equity report, which is due the end of January. So that'll be coming before you in the next couple of weeks to approve that report. And then working with our new benefits, with our new insurance, so getting that out to employees so that they're updated and utilizing what they can that we have. Any other?
Any other questions? Comments? Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, I don't have any comments, but I just want to say, your report is some of the best news I've heard in quite some time. There's been job openings for a very long time, many job openings. So to hear that there's interviews going is just very encouraging because that has not been the case for a number of positions for quite some time. And then just having you in your role now, taking on as much as you did just right out of the gate, I really appreciate that. So thank you for your hard work.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
Thanks. You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
All right. We're going to continue on with our agenda, and I see that Elena Hansel is here. We have some information and updates from soil and water.
I don't have my PowerPoint because I don't know how to work that, so I just have it printed out. May I, Chair?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Should I just go ahead and get started, Chair? Okay. So I have a few motions before you, as you're aware, in that county water planner, and so I'll go over the presentation in a minute. But Cook County, as we transition from the local water management plan, we're transitioning into the rainoverhead waters, so we'll have these two watershed plans. The history of water management planning within the counties is always that there's been a citizen advisory group. And so with the transition into these watershed plans, we don't really need that group anymore because we won't have a locally, this small, tiny little county plan, instead we have these larger watershed plans. We still have citizens engaged. They can still come to meetings. They can participate. It's just we don't need this advisory committee to inform a plan we don't have anymore. So the first motion I have before you, which I'd ask you to approve, is to disband this water plan advisory committee. They are disappointed because it's a really fun group of people, and we meet a couple of times a year, and, you know, they really have been just phenomenal to work with. So I think all the people, I've been here since 2011 that I've gotten to work with, it's just been amazing. And hopefully, we'll be able to use the individuals in different capacities with conservation. So that's the first motion I have before you.
All right. Any questions for Elena? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to disband the Cook County Local Water Management Plan Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there a second?
Swalison, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. The second one I have now before you is, I'm just going to give you a quick, brief update as to why I'm here and asking for approval for this work plan. As you know, we've adopted, the county and the soil and water conservation district have adopted the one watershed, one plan for Lake Superior North, and that was adopted in 2017. With that adoption, every biennium, there is funding that comes forward. So, and there's a policy committee. And that policy committee consists of a supervisor from each soil and water conservation district as their elected officials, and then a commissioner from each of the two counties, so from Lake and Cook County. They make up the policy committee. They help direct how that funding's going to be spent. Because it impacts both the county and the soil and water conservation district, it's been asked to have approval through each of the boards for how the money is spent each biennium. So just a brief reminder, where is the Lake Superior North watershed, and how does it go? If you turn to the next page, it's that whole blue area. So it goes all the way to Graham Portage, and they're welcome to participate however they would like, all the way down to Lake County. You'll see a little bit is in St. Louis County, but they opted not to participate in the plan because they had less than 10%, I believe it's 10% or 25% within the watershed. And so they just signed a little memo saying we're not doing it, and they don't get any funding, and it just goes all to Lake and Cook County and to the organizations involved. The next page shows what do we use this watershed-based implementation funding for? The funding is provided through the Board of Water and Soil Resources. It's provided to partners who have adopted the one watershed, one plan. But partners outside of those who have adopted it are welcome to use the money as long as they're working with the Soil and Water Conservation District or the county. And I'll give an example of that in a minute. And then the funding is to be used to implement the activities in the plan for the benefit of soil and water. So you can't just come and say, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and piecemeal it. We've developed a process, which we're always fine-tuning, to ensure that it's related to the plan, ensure that it's going to have measurable outcomes and be used because this is citizens' money, and we want to do conservation. The next page kind of gives you a bit more history. So in the fiscal year 2018, the watershed was awarded $387, $59,000. Projects that were included, and this is a picture of it, but it's the Graham Ray Storm Water Projects. This was our first year of funding, so we got to figure out how we were going to use it. And we worked with the city to install a giant sediment basin at the east Second Avenue, and so you can check it out if you ever have the opportunity, but this is what it looks like during construction. This year, we're going to be finishing up Eighth Avenue. You know, there's a big sediment basin by where the old pool is. We're going to be fixing that and doing downstream work so that it actually functions and does what it's supposed to be doing. And then our office did an assessment of Village Ditch, Natureboard Creek, whatever you would like to call it, looking for sediment. It's been really altered and changed, so we were able to get designs completed, so we now can secure more funding to fix that. We've had a lot of landowners in that area call us. And then we're continually working with the city of Graham Ray and with the residents for stormwater issues. So that's how that funding is being utilized. It expires at the end of this year. Then there's also the Lake Superior Coastal Erosion Mapping Tool, which I have training on. I have the training, and if anybody's interested, we have it for landowners, for business owners, to be able to understand erosion rates and when they're doing development, to be able to use this tool to help them understand things. And then this tool's got four phases. We're just now into phase four, and that is going to help completely determine erosion rates. So land services will be able to, for example, pull this up and say, oh, this area you want to build in has an erosion rate of X, Y, and Z. You actually probably should build it back farther. So it's a huge process. It normally takes four to five years. So that was phase one, was done with this funding. Questions so far?
Madam Chair, thank you. Elena, as far as the Village Ditch Natureboard Creek assessment and project design, can you talk a little bit about the scope of that?
Yeah. So Technician Phil Larson and our office worked with our engineers that we contract out, and they walked the whole thing and did what's called a banks model. So they looked at the banks for, I don't know how to describe it, but they looked at the creek, and what they did was determine where's the largest sediment coming from, and then they created designs to fix it, basically. And so I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but I know that there's one area just south of the business park. And so we are in close contact with the engineer working with the EDA, who's doing the stormwater management plans for the business park. So that means as we move forward, we can really connect with him and ensure that all of this is working together instead of two separate systems. But yeah, so it was just an opportunity to be able to understand that system better. And then when landowners call us, too, we can pull it up and say, oh, yeah, this bank is really eroding, and it's probably because it's getting this much more water, so it's looking at that whole watershed.
Thank you. The reason I ask is when the new Gunflint Trail was put in, there were culverts put in to help manage some of the water north of that road. And there were some natural pathways for the water before that, and so some of the culverts, I've noticed, did not line up and have caused some issues with some of that, some of that property. I'm not sure if it's county property, but it is school property at least. And of course, there's unofficial trail there as well, and so that trail has been impacted. And so I didn't know if it's possible to include kind of that up-to-the-road area as an assessment, part of the assessment.
I can look into that and see where, and get back to you for sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I don't need an answer, I guess.
Okay.
Just a heads up, if that's possible, if that's
Yeah, for sure.
Practical or, you know,
Yep.
Appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So the next is fiscal year 2020. This one, you'll see, it's broken in by counties and SWCDs because of the nature. I'm going to back up. FY 2018, the Soil and Water Conservation District was a fiscal agent. As we moved into fiscal year 2020, the counties came forward and said, hey, we want to actually do some projects with this money. We want to do a lot with septic systems. Well, soil and waters don't, we don't do septic systems. And I said, I didn't want to be responsible for that, and we just didn't want to have that obligation. So the state was kind enough to give us two separate contracts for this watershed funding, which is why it's split up as it is for that amount. So the Soil and Water Conservations, this is still an active grant. Work that is and/or has been completed is the city of Two Harbors completed their stormwater management plan with this funding. They have installed a stormwater dissipator. It's something that we can look at for the city of Graham Ray. It's a pretty cool contraption. Again, we're working continually on that coastal erosion project, so we're on phase two and phase three started to get finished, which is just collecting more and more data and forming the process. We have education outreach planned for landowners within the watershed. Some of this may be in Lake County and not in Cook. Forestry work and then urban green infrastructure, and that will be taking place in Two Harbors. And then the counties, they, you know, Way to Go Land Services, they did over around 100 septic systems were brought into compliance in Cook County during this time. And so that was been the last two years. And then, in case you didn't know, they were featured in the Border Water and Soil Resources snapshots. So that's just a highlight of their article. And then Lake County is also working on the septic system work for this funding. Questions on that?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. What's urban green infrastructure?
Yeah, so that's just simply like these giant dissipators, or it's rain gardens, or it's just, it's not the traditional of like rain gutter, stormwater system, blah, 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 blah. It's actually treating the water before it goes somewhere, trying to store it, slow it down. Just different systems depending on what the landscape and what the water needs, the quantity, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. So then the last page, that brings us up to right now, which is fiscal year 2022. We have the same amount for the watershed as in 2020, which is exciting. We have additional partners that are going to work with the counties and the soil and water conservation districts. So ARDC, and this is our current work plan, which I'm going to be asking you to approve. ARDC is going to be finishing up that Lake Superior Erosion Mapping Tool. They also have a grant with the coastal program, so it's being partially funded through other mechanisms. We would like to continue as the conservation districts to do coastal erosion and education outreach. We did an effort this summer and reached well over 150 people. So we want to continue that in a couple of years and try to hit the next group of people as people continue to shift through. The Skunk Creek has stream bank stabilization, so that's Lake SWCD. The City of Silver Bay is going to be a stormwater management plan, so they've put in for an application. We'd like to award that. We're really excited because we've been working, well, Lake SWCD's been working with them for three, sorry, since 2018 to try to get this forward. So we're excited that they're on board now and wanting to do that. The City of Graham Ray, we're going to be, and Cook County Highway Department and the Soil and Water, we're going to be looking at, again, green infrastructure. So with the improvement of Fifth Avenue, what can we do to slow that water down? Because we've all seen that river going down that road and straight, just straight down. So what can we do to help with that? So this provides funding to be able to hire and get some new innovative things in there, hopefully. The City of Graham Ray, again, that Village Ditch, Natureboard Creek. For both of these, well, Soil and Water Conservation will seek extra funding because it won't cover the cost, but it gives us a place to have that leveraged funds to provide match for other funding. So this will be one project, Natureboard Creek, and then hopefully doing some stormwater ponds north of the Gunflint Trail. And then update the Lake Superior North One Watershed Plan, which I will be coming to you again because we have to update the plan every five years. So we'll look at our accomplishments over the five years and update the plan as necessary. We, Lake County has put in to do a GIS inventory of delineated wetlands, so get it more down at the local level, so they can see it more at a parcel level instead of so general. And then inventory of shoreline restoration projects, and that's again Lake County. So they want, they would like to evaluate some of the success and failures of the Lake Superior properties that have had either vegetation or hard armaring done. And is it working? Should they continue with their process? So this is the work plan for fiscal year 2022. The Cook County Soil and Water Conservation District at our last board meeting approved for us to be the fiscal agent. So I will be managing this process again. It's my third time with it, so I get it and understand how the process works, and I work closely with the state on this. So what I'm asking is that the commissioners, that you approve our work plan, and then we can continue to move forward. And if there's questions, again, please ask them. It's a lot of information to cover.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Elena, this is an amazing list, very ambitious. Thank you so much for your willingness to work on the plan and put this together. It can really, really help our communities out drastically. And it's just really, really exciting, so thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Elena? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 watershed-based implementation funding and plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Starly support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starly. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. To continue on, then, as the water planner, I also do all the reporting for the county for what's called the Natural Resource Block Grant. So I'll be coming again before you because we have to close out all those grants for fiscal year 2021. But for now, I have these two. So the county's been awarded for a number of years upgrade funding to upgrade septic systems for folks with a lower income. And it provides around $10,000 for each system, and it's pretty beneficial. And then often, the landowners will combine that with a septic system loan through the county. So we're at that time of year where we just start closing things out. And so I would like a motion, if possible, to close out the fiscal year 2018 SSTS upgrade funding. All that funding was spent to upgrade systems.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item.
I understand. Thank you. Commissioner Smolison.
I will make the motion to close out the Cook County fiscal year 2018 Septic Treatment System Upgrade.
Thank you, Commissioner Smolison. Is there support?
Starly support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starly. Any further discussion?
And Madam Chair, I cannot discuss this item because I recuse myself, but I've been advised by Attorney Hickon in the past that if someone's going to recuse themselves, you should explain why, and it's because I've received funding through this program in the past, so.
Thank you for explaining that, Commissioner Mills. I appreciate that. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So as we close this one out, we also need to work on 2019, and there's a whole more, bunch more, but these two are connected because 2019 provided funding for a system, but it expires in 2021. It just expired. So we do need to return funding up to the amount of the $25,350. It's hard to find landowners willing to come forward to use this. Even we try, I know the county tries to promote it and let people know, but it's, I think, just hard for people. So sometimes we have to return the money. So when we get these grants, all the money comes to the county, and then the county disperses it out. So it's not a reimbursement program like some grants. So because of that, the county then needs to return this funding that wasn't spent. We cannot get an extension on it. Sometimes due to legislation language and grant funding, it prohibits what you can and can't get extensions for. So with that being said, we were, they were able to spend around $5,000, the county was, of this funding originally that was provided. So we'd like to return this remaining amount then.
All right. Commissioner Starly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we returned the money, but it's a new year, so do you get more money now, starting with the new year?
Yeah, so the county did receive funding, and then I have to apologize because I've been doing a lot of reporting in, for 2020 and 2021. The hard part is when you have to send money, it's not that it's a mark on you, but it's kind of a mark because what they see is, "Oh, you don't need the money." So then they reduce the amount that you get for, like, the next year. So I wouldn't be surprised if in 2022, if the county chooses to apply, the amount is reduced because we still have a lot of money and it's getting returned. So unfortunately, it kind of leaves that mark, but as it gets spent, then you can get more money, if that makes sense, so.
Well, the reason I ask is because we've updated over 100 septic systems, which is fabulous. I don't know, is the word need to be out there more? Or I think, you know, with our rural area, I would think people, if they knew about it, would certainly want to at least apply.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where the county's at because it's the county's program, so I just have been doing the reporting. I will tell you, the guidelines for this is that you have to be a year-round resident. They try to not have seasonal as much as possible for this funding. Sorry, you can't be seasonal. You have to be a year-round resident. And you do have to meet specific income guidelines, which I know we increase. When I ran the program, I always increased every year and, based off of what people told me, I tried to get it so they could get in the program. Fitting still, again, legally within the parameters, but you have to, yeah, just meet very specific parameters. So I'm not sure with the systems that were upgraded, if they were year-round or not and what all those thresholds were, but it's definitely something the county could work, you know, through to step in.
We appreciate that feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Smolison.
Just to educate myself, when we say we're going to return this money, who is it going back to?
It goes back to the state, so the Border Water and Soil Resources. And the MPCA collaborate on this. So my understanding is it'll go some, between one of those two. I'd imagine the MPCA, and then they'll reallocate it to somebody else. So it goes back into that coffers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, and just for, just for added perspective, I too had to fall within the income guidelines. And so it's a pretty narrow group of people in our county who are going to qualify for that. And it, I mean, basically, younger families is, I'd say, a generalization, but I'm sure that's not entirely the case.
No, I know. It seems to be not so much in the middle, like, but it seems to be the lower or the folks on Social Security.
Okay, okay, right.
And I had a lot of those people just come in and be like, "I'm on Social Security." Yep. And the nice thing is, is we had a few contractors. I don't, again, I'm removed from this program now other than reporting that would, the landowner would say, "Hey, I'm working with this grant." The contractors would just really cut the cost as low as possible so that the landowners didn't have to take out much of a loan or anything. So sometimes they would just say, "Here we did." You know, it was pretty amazing to watch some of that happen. It was a part I really liked about my job, so it was good to see.
Good information for us to have, definitely.
And I think, again, just because, we also ran into difficulties with implementing and just timelines and supply issues and all that, so I can easily see how money would have to also get returned if it can't be spent in a certain time. And we all know the contractors are
Swamped.
stretched, you know, just like everyone in our county is, so. But because of that, I think I also need to recuse myself of this one.
Yes.
Just to clarify that timeline.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Smolison.
I will make the motion to return Cook County fiscal year 2019 Septic Treatment System Upgrade and RBG in the amount of $25,350.
Thank you. Is there support?
Starly support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starly. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, and I'll be back for more.
Absolutely. We love having you. Thank you, Elena.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right. On our agenda, we're going to move on to MIS, and I see Rowan Watkins coming forward. Good morning, Rowan.
Morning. Madam Chair, Commissioners, today we have a scheduled, regularly scheduled replacement of PCs, laptops, and copiers. And so this is part of our budgeted, regularly scheduled replacement for these items. And we are seeking your approval for, to move forward with that. I would stand for any questions on this.
Commissioner Starly.
Madam Chair, thank you. Is this for the whole county departments?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so everybody's included?
Yes.
As long as they need something?
Yes.
Okay.
So the way that it works is that for laptops, as an example, we try not to let any laptop get older than three years. We have a total of 75 laptops, and we do, as, this is a capital account, so it does roll over, but we do our best to replace a third of those every year. And so there may be some give or take, but that's the budget and the target and why we're seeking approval, is to be able to replace up to a third of the county laptops again, so that we would do that each year, and so that on a three-year cycle, all laptops are replaced. Same for PCs, and the copiers are on a six-year replacement.
Seven.
Seven, yes.
The reason I ask is I think I'm in line.
Oh.
I think mine is actually four years old, but I haven't said anything.
Well, then you are, you are definitely in line.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Rowan? Commissioner Hawkins.
I'm just curious about remote working now and workstations versus laptops and how that has changed in your budget, budgeting and...
Yeah, it's something that I'll definitely be taking a look at as we come into the next budget. This budget was set by former MIS Director Rena Rogers, and so it's pretty established. But I think when you look at the numbers, I mean, we've definitely transitioned away from PC workstations. I think where the number for the total organization is 35, and we're at up to 75 on laptops. So it's definitely trending that way. And unless there's, you know, some technical or real operational reason why a user can't use a laptop, we're encouraging them to do so just because of the flexibility that it gives everyone.
So that's kind of the way you're thinking it's going, then?
We're hoping to, yeah.
Okay.
But there are some limitations, you know, certain laptops and just different reasons. Some of them are public computers that live at a specific place in the building, dispatch. You know, there's a handful of things that just aren't operationally practical to be a laptop. But for the most part, that's, that's the way we're moving.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments?
Madam Chair, if I could, I just wanted to mention, we, when we were putting together the agenda, we talked about having this on the consent agenda because this is a budgeted item, and it's on a regular replacement schedule. And in the past, we have had it on consent, and that has worked. But I know that frequently, questions come up, like the one Commissioner Hawkins just asked. And so we did put it on, on the action agenda, but really, it has already been approved by the board. So I just wanted to clarify that. And also, just to get some feedback from the board when we have items like this, because this also happened with some of the highway items, when something has been budgeted already. You know, I can see where, you know, when you're talking about like a truck with a plow or a dump bed, you're talking about a lot of money. And so I think it's probably good to revisit items like that. But for something like routine computer replacement, I'm wondering, is it the board's preference to simply leave items like that on consent? Or would you prefer to have them on the action list?
Madam Chair, I would definitely prefer consent, but I do see the value in having them on the action because we can have some discussion about it, especially with, you know, somewhat new board, a new team here, understanding everything, I think is important. So I see the value there, but my hope is that we'll get to a place where it's all consent, you know. Once, I mean, if it's already been approved, of course. I mean, versus, you know, approving it a third time even, you know, like, we don't, I think, I think we want to streamline and make our government efficient.
Right. And there's the efficiency issue, but then there's also the transparency issue. So just making sure that, you know, there's adequate opportunity for, for questions and comment.
I think it's also important for our public, when it's this type of expenditure, that level, as you say, to be really transparent and go through that one more time. So if individuals haven't had an opportunity to understand what the, the cost is going to get us for the county, that we can further clarify that.
Thank you for that. That's helpful.
All right. So we have already approved this. We really don't need to go through again. But we appreciate you coming forward and your explanation and the opportunity for us to get further information.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rowan.
Thanks, Rowan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now for those big-ticket items from the Highway Department.
Big spenders.
Josh and Robbie will come up to the microphone and talk a little bit about some of their purchases and also some project awards.
Don't play, yeah.
You have six feet apart.
Yeah, there we go. That's right. That's right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Josh is going to start us off. I've got the first one, and like you mentioned, our, our toys, as we call them, tend to be a little more expensive than some other departments. The first one that we have on is some armor radio replacements. So it's a good segue coming from MIS because we worked with them a lot to come up with how we were going to address the replacement of our radios. I'm trying to remember the exact context, but at one point, I was in a meeting with Rowan, and we were talking about equipment and money. And I said, "I've got this, I've got radios on my list, and I have no, no plan." You know, when I first started, I'd be like, "What's the deal with radios? Do you just buy some new radios or what?" And he laughed like that. And he said, "No, that's for your department to budget for, and you have a lot of them. And you were one of the first departments to get them, so they are old." So that's when I kind of dug into finding out what we needed to do. Currently, we have 60 radios in the Highway Department. We have five pieces of equipment. equipment with no radio in them. The recommended replacement time is seven to 10 years, and the bulk of ours were bought in 2012, so we're at 10 years. So we're at the end of what Rowan called the end of service life. Initially, I was calling them obsolete, and maybe that wasn't necessarily the correct language. But they're end of service life. And so what he explained to me that that means is that they stopped making parts for our radios in 2019, and you can keep repairing them until those parts become unavailable. And now that has occurred as well. So anytime one of our radios fail, they need to be replaced. There basically is no repairing them, which is my understanding, anyway. Also, there is some concern that a lot of them could stop working in a short period of time, because most of them were bought at the same time. So they're all the same age. And that would be, you know, not ideal for our ability to operate if our radios are not working. So then we had to start talking about money. What do these things cost? They're really expensive. They're way more than, I guess, I would have ever expected. You know, there are no Fleet Farm walkie-talkies here. So we're looking plus or minus around $3,000 a radio. And so really, grand total, right around $200,000 to replace all of our radios. And so the approach we took is, we started budgeting in our equipment replacement fund $50,000 per year, which was in our 2022 budget. That's our first, our installment, if you will, so that we, you know, obviously, don't have to absorb that cost all at once, spread it out, make it predictable. I mean, that's been kind of our goal, along with equipment replacement. So hoping, you know, four years. So we got to that point, you know, I'm working on my equipment replacements this year, and I did a lot more emailing back and forth with Rowan, because I just needed to understand a few more things, like, our radios are working right now, and $200,000 is a lot of money, and even $50,000 is a lot. So we're trying to come up with, you know, a good balanced plan of how, how to do this. Initially, we were just going to buy $50,000 worth of radios each year and just get it done. But I found they, they really have no, basically no trade-in value. I think he said maybe $100. So it's kind of different than a skid steer or a plow truck, where we're trying to find that sweet spot where we still have some resale value, reliability versus, you know, initial cost. But basically, these have no value, or very little value after we're done with them. So in my mind, that meant we should really maximize their lifespan. So if they're still working, we should keep using them, and not just buy new ones all at once. So kind of what we came up with was to add radios to our equipment that doesn't have them, get those five pieces of equipment with radios. There's a sixth on there, one of our tractors. You can barely understand what he's saying when he's in there. So that's why there's six hard-mount radios in there. And then we're also replacing our bank of six handheld radios. We already have one bank of six that also work, if I remember correctly. And so we'll have 12 handheld radios now, six old and six new. And kind of our idea going forward is, we'll continue to budget for the replacement, so that we have that money if they start failing quickly. But really, we're going to use those handhelds as kind of a gap measure, you know, so when they, if, if two or three stop working, we can just put a handheld in that truck. We have some time to buy new radios then for those two or three. That was kind of the scenario that Rowan said might be the most possible, is maybe a couple stop working at a time. And so I thought, if we have enough handhelds to just cover the, you know, a couple of months it takes to replace them, that's, that's good enough, I think, for us. Kind of with the caveat that if a lot of them start failing all at once, then of course, we reassess and start getting some new radios in here. So that's what this first purchase is for, is for the six truck-mounted radios, that, to installing the equipment that doesn't have any. And then a bank of six handhelds to kind of be our backups. And then from there, we're just going to kind of wait and see, and see how long they last, rather than just replacing them all at once. And I'd take any questions about that, if you have any.
Well, Josh, I'd like to thank you for the fact that you've spread out the costs, you're, you're being really fiscally responsible with your dollars, and you've given us a great explanation of how you're going to utilize those radios. So thanks for clarifying that. Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is Motorola the only brand that's useful?
I believe that is the only brand available for Armor.
Okay. So do you have any idea when you want to order these after we approve this, I'm assuming?
We want to order them immediately, because there's a price increase on the very near horizon, so we're trying to get the order in before that.
Yeah. The reason I ask is we have a problem with supply and demand. So hopefully, soon as you can order them, you'll get them within a reasonable amount of time.
Yep, yep. And we'll talk more about that with plow trucks. But these ones will come sooner than plow trucks do. It looks like, I forget what Rowan said, maybe a month or two, which, something like that.
All right.
Acceptable.
Madam Chair, I think I saw Rowan's hand go up. Rowan, do you have anything you want to add to that answer?
I'm just clarifying the question about whether or not you can use other brands than Motorola. And the answer is, you, you can, but the price is very comparable. And from just the operational standpoint, from programming, to maintenance, to the dealers that you work with and everything, it's been sort of best practice across the state to use Motorola. So with, just, it is possible to use other brands on the Armor system, but we do use Motorola for those reasons. And we encourage our departments to buy Motorola.
So I'm wondering, out in the townships, are they using the same, you know?
They are.
Okay.
So, most of the radios purchased in the county were right around this timeline. As Josh said, the Highway Department was one of the first to go with an outright purchase for their radios. And then shortly thereafter, in 2013 or 14, I believe, is when we received the FEMA AFG Assistance to Firefighter Grant, which was, the vast majority of the radios in the county were purchased through that grant. And they are all of this model, this line of radios, XTS, XTL, which again, like Josh said, has reached end of service life.
The reason I ask is I think it's really important, because the part replacement ended in 2019, so parts are not available right now. So we have some township meetings coming up, so I'll throw this out to them, too.
Yeah, and it would be a great reminder. And our local 911 Communications Committee has touched on this, and I've been to multiple fire chief meetings to share this information. So they should be aware. But I think for the townships, especially the board, their level, that would be a
Right.
Good, good message for them to hear.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stollison?
Yeah, I just going to point out as well, well, first off, thank you for that thought process and the depth that you went into this, rather than just going to one-size-fits-all and we're just going to move forward, I thought was very thoughtful. And also, just pointing out that you're correct, that generally, it's, it's over $3,000, no matter who you are, trying to go in to do these buys. And you guys managed to work this out, that you got the thematic cost less than that with the buy that you did. And so, congratulations, and thank you.
Any further discussion? Would someone like to entertain a motion?
Well, make the motion to approve the purchase of 12 Armor radios for the replacement for the Highway Department.
Is there a second?
Storley's support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. There is a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You can get that order in this afternoon.
Thank you. The next thing we are going to talk about is awarding a project, which is always exciting. This is one of our poorest-rated bridges in the, in the county, and actually in the, in the state, to be fair enough. And I'm excited to get this done. So this next, this coming summer, we'll be able to do the Carlson Creek Bridge replacement. It's off of Moose Valley Road, up near Hovland. This project, if you read a little bit on it, is one of the roads that we had re-designated as a UT route. And so, instead of being, originally, this was going to get paid for through our transportation sales tax funds, either that, or some type of us just saving up money through the levy and trying to do it that way. But because of this re-designation, we were able to utilize the Town Bridge account from the state. We've talked a lot about that, but this is a shining example of almost, you know, a little under half a million dollars that Cook County does not have to spend. So that's kind of awesome. And I'm very happy we were all able to work together to get that done. And we'll talk about a bigger project later that also utilizes that. But if you look at, you know, the, the bid tally on there, I'm sure the questions will come up regarding why our engineer's estimate was almost double the other way. It's the opposite problem that we had from last summer. And this is something we've been working on internally quite a bit. It was interesting when we were going through the bid. One, I'm very happy we got five bids. That's amazing. And so I think there's, there's a lot that goes into coming up with these estimates, and so many things that are very variable. You can look at project location, the timing of, not only just in Cook County, but where in Cook County, the timing of the bid letting. So we did this, you know, early winter, which is generally when people are wrapping up construction season, and looking for projects into the next, you know, summer. So hopefully, you know, I think this is an example of getting in when prices are good. The type of project, you know, if this was a bigger bridge project, and we'll, you can talk about that again with the cross-river one, you know, you can see we had two bidders versus this one is a concrete box culvert, you had five bidders. So it's a little more, maybe more people can do it. Contractor schedules, as I had mentioned, plays into it. If somebody's really busy, maybe they're just going to throw in a number, and great if they get it, you know. And then the other thing, too, is honestly, contractors are setting these prices. They're setting competitive prices. So if somebody can say, "Hey, I can do this for 5,000 bucks," and somebody, you know, everybody else might say 20,000 bucks, you know, we've no way to predict that. I did spend some time going over just the low bid that we received from, from Yulin Brothers, and then also a couple other places that we get prices from. So one is the state average price, so the trunk highway system, what that is. There's another way to look at district pricing, so like us in Lake County, Carlton, St. Louis, you know, at least the Arrowhead, and see, you know, how much things cost there. How does that compare to the trunk highway? How does that compare to our bids? And this is an art. It's fascinating to look at this. I wish I had, not coherent, I wish I had concise answers on this already, because it's all over the place. If I look at, you know, even if I, if you would have said, "Take trunk highway prices, just min dot, state average prices," which I would never do. We are not state average up here. I still would have been over $150,000. So we'd still be having this conversation. So, yeah, I think, great news. We got, I think this thing getting replaced is going to be great. I think the price we got on it is wonderful, obviously. And so I would recommend awarding to Yulin Brothers, I guess.
Are there any other questions that we may have for Robbie? All right. If not, is there a motion by resolution to award the project to Yulin Brothers?
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Stollison. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, all this good news is making me nervous.
Yeah, like, where's it going?
I can help you with that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. One is done.
One is done. Thank you.
All right.
Think back to Josh. All right. Two more pieces of equipment on the list here. The next one is the replacement of one of our standard large plow trucks, the big yellow ones you see on the road. I don't have a whole lot to add for this, other than it's, you know, it's, we discussed the equipment plan quite a bit, and we're at that buying one a year is kind of our current plan, to get them all on a 14-year replacement schedule. We readjusted our budget number, you know, before, before the budget came to you, you know, of course, we've discussed how we have kind of our estimates mapped out for two decades to come. And prices really went up this year. And we kind of saw that coming, especially, most of the iron that goes on the truck really went up a lot. I was trying to find the exact number, and I couldn't find it. But all, all of these things are bought off the state negotiated contract. And really, that's the simplest, best way to, for us to buy equipment. All of the specifications are done, all the competitive bidding is done, and then they just put out a list, and we can buy. And they, for us to come up with that on our own would be extremely time-consuming, and we probably would spend more, to be honest. So that's how we buy it. And the reason I bring that up is because there is a clause in there for suppliers to change their prices mid-contract if their raw materials meet a certain increase, and that happened. And in over a decade of doing this, I, I didn't even know that was a possibility. So it's very rare. But Towmaster, who puts the box and the plows and everything on the truck, had to send us an amended quote, I think even that the attachment's probably called amended, because they had to raise their price, because they met whatever that threshold is from the state to where they can renegotiate, because their costs had gone up so much. So I looked up last year's truck. This truck is the exact same. Same truck, same additions, everything. Last year was 254,0694. This year, 276,565. So 8% increase roughly. And again, we, we had budgeted for 280, kind of anticipating this increase, and I made sure we stayed under our budgeted amount for this year. But it's, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, the increase in cost. And equally as unfortunate is the actually receiving the truck. So the truck we ordered this time last year is still not here. It's not even close to being here. It was supposed to be delivered in October, and the cabin chassis from Mack hadn't even arrived to the Twin Cities yet in October. It came in December. So there, maybe, if we're lucky, just starting to build the rest of the truck. And so this one, I put in, I can put in a soft order with Towmaster, where it's just kind of a, a commitment that we have a plan to order one. They understand it has to be board-approved and budgeted and all that, but they'll give us a spot. And so the spot for this truck, the plan is the cabin chassis should come early fall, and the truck will get built spring of '23. So we're really way out on plow trucks. And as you might imagine, or have heard, parts are not easy to get either. So we're not necessarily at a crisis, but it's certainly concerning how hard it is to get parts, and how hard it is to get new trucks, because one or the other is pretty necessary. So we're ordering our next truck. I would love to see it sooner, but I'm not planning on it. And I just, you know, I guess I'd just like to stay on track with our, our one a year, and get those orders in in January every year. And hopefully, one of these days, things will settle down, and they'll start coming in a reasonable time again. But this is our, our most important piece of equipment. I think I put that in the agenda item. Really, we're trying to maximize reliability of these trucks. And, you know, so it's not like the radios where, you know, if a few don't work, ah, we can make do. These are really critical. I would hope everyone agrees that this is our most important piece of equipment that needs to be reliable. And so that's why we've, we're set on making sure that we're replacing them at a regular interval.
Any questions or comments for Josh? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And whereas, you know, it's bad news that it's an increase both in the cost and the, and the time, timeline, I just want to reemphasize that it is under budget. And, and so I see that as, as great news, me being me. But thank you for, for explaining it all. And, yeah, it is concerning and stressful just to hear about those supply issues. But really appreciate staying the course and trying to keep our plan as level as we can. So thank you.
Any other further comments? Commissioner Hawkins?
I just want to thank you for the work that you guys do to really make sure that you are being responsible with money and looking at ways to make sure the taxpayers are not paying for too much. I appreciate that. And this is an example, I think, Mr. Yorki, when we were talking about what should be on a consent agenda, I get, we, we approved you guys to do this. But it really is helpful to me, and I think the public, to hear the struggles that you've gone through and the, and your thought process. I just really appreciate hearing that. So I appreciate that this was not on a consent agenda. Thank you very much.
And knowing that we have a cab, we have parts, we have all kinds of concerns, and this is a good statement to make in Cook County, we're not out of the woods yet. But let's get this ordered. Is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Stollison supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Stollison. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
All right. The last piece of equipment is a little smaller plow truck. And you may or may not recall, we actually came last fall, I think November, if I remember right, to approve the cabin chassis order for this year. So that has already been ordered. So that has already been ordered. I believe that's looking at June, maybe, to receive it. And so the, the smaller kind of package that goes on these trucks is a little more readily available, so I didn't feel the need to approve that ahead of time. So this is just the, you know, the small dump box, the spreader, the hydraulics, again, from Towmaster off state contract. Just kind of the, the rest of the outfitting for this truck. The one kind of hitch with this one is Towmaster doesn't do small plows, which is very inconvenient. So this truck will actually have to go to a third truck equipment company to get a plow put on it. But we'll probably just, again, go on state bid and catch probably United Truck Body in Duluth and get a plow put on it. So there'll be one more step left for this one, but this is, the, the bulk of the cost, of course, is the cabin chassis and the box and spreader. We're replacing a pretty old, pretty rough truck with this. It's maybe not as critical of a piece of equipment as our big plows, but we use it a fair amount and it's, it's due. It breaks down quite regularly and I'm really looking forward to having the new replacement.
All right. Any questions for Josh? Not entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the dump box and sand spreader for the one ton Ford F-550.
And is there support?
Fully support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Now we're on to our Cross River Bridge Project Award.
Yes, another town bridge account. So this one, if everybody remembers from last summer, was a bid we actually rejected. That was the one. So Cross River Bridge, it's on North Gunflint Lake Road, basically at the end of the trail, hangar right just before the resort.
That little wooden bridge.
Yes. That is, again, one of the worst in the county and the state. So we're working on getting those replaced. But yeah, having, this one is another big one. MinDOT is the one that came through a couple of years ago, I believe, and those big steel beams that are on there trying to hold the thing up. Yeah, no, that's time to go. So yeah, I was excited to get this back on here, to redesignate the roads, see that it qualified for the town bridge account. And similar to the almost half a million dollars from Carlson Creek, this will end up being 1.4 million dollars. That, again, Cook County does not have to spend on infrastructure, which is super cool. You know, as I mentioned before, this is one, you know, this is kind of your more stereotypical bridge. So maybe there's not as many people, not as many contractors, especially up here, that can handle that type of project or do it. So you can see we ended up with two bids, which is still one more than we got last year, and I'll take that. As far as our estimate is concerned, you can see we came in a little 1.24 million and the low bid here ended up being just under 1.4. It's about a 12% difference. Personally, I'm very happy with that. A lot of times, you know, when I've worked with, with the state, it's, it's kind of like a, it's a little bit of a gray area. Obviously, you want, the closer you are, the better. Generally, it's about a 15%. If you can be within 15%, you're pretty good to go. And so that's where in this regard, I know that as you get higher in the dollar amount, the difference can seem like a lot, but percentage wise, you might be within it. And so, you know, for all the reasons that I had mentioned before. But, so I was very happy to see these come in. Yeah, I guess I would recommend or ask to award the Cross River Project to Redstone Construction. And I'll entertain any questions, obviously, too.
Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, um, thank you. And, and thank you, Ravi. Looks like we're saving $100,000 from the previous bid where we rejected. Is that?
Yeah, so this, yeah, so the previous bid, I guess to go back into it some more. So the previous bid would have been, and this is last year before we redesigned the roads. So it was County Road 46. Now it's UT 46, which those two letters make a big difference. But yeah, so last year's bid, I believe, was like 1.5, I think, somewhere in there. And so, yeah, so about $100,000 difference from, from last year.
Yeah. So that's awesome. Thank you for that recommendation. And then again, the whole redesignation of the UT system is just saving, saving, saving. Again, this good news is overwhelming.
Absolutely.
Very much so.
It's one of the few things that's gone down in price that I'm aware of.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that.
Any other further questions or comment for Ravi? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support?
Fully support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And now on to our request for something that happened this past weekend.
Correct. So I already called them, kind of said, hey, you know, what's going on here? Obviously, the board needs to approve these type of permits before said event happens. And so they were, I think I called Beth Ambrosian up there and, no, she was great. She completely was like, I totally forgot. And so I had talked to her about, you know, just wanting from, from our end of things, the things we're concerned about, you know? Traffic control, how are you handling, you know, county road crossings and that stuff. And we talked and I felt comfortable enough with what she had explained to me that I was okay with, with signing the permit, I guess. And so I guess for, for now, I don't know if this is just a formality at this point or for information. We all knew the mail run happened and go Cook County mushers at that regard, but yeah, any questions, I guess? I don't, you know, it's kind of weird.
No questions for me. I want to thank our highway department. I was in the caravan behind the plow that went down the Gunflint Trail, heading towards Trail Center. So thank you for clearing the way for the mushers, the volunteers and all the spectators. Everybody was kind of waiting to see that plow go up. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, and thank, thank you for, for working, working on this and with them. And, you know, it's a, it's a very wonderful community event. I, I still just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing things as, as we should be. And so I, I trust that their lesson was learned and, and that they, they know that.
I hope so.
Don't, yes, don't do, don't just do things.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's just my only, only comment. But very excited to follow it and, and hear the news of it though as well. So a very successful event and really, really appreciate the work that was done.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah. Um, I, I appreciate that you worked with them too and I see where things can be in oversight. I get that.
Yeah.
Done that myself. But I'm just wondering, do we have a policy that if there is another group out there that does something and doesn't get a permit, do we have a procedure to deal with that?
I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I know, you know, when I was reading, you know, reading through the permit, there is, you know, some guidelines at the beginning of it that do say, you know, please do this like two months ahead of time, you know? And so obviously when we received this and, you know, it was kind of like, okay. So yeah, I'm, I'm not too sure. What, you know, obviously I'm not going to sit here and be like, you can't do the mail run. Like that would be a little, that's a little ridiculous. So I don't know if there needs to be more outreach on our part, you know, or if it's more, or is it just specifically on the event holders? Maybe that's something to figure out. And, you know, we could talk about it in like public safety, you know, committee level and try and see maybe if there's a better way to get this.
I think that's an appropriate way to approach it, you know, having a checklist for the people that are organizing the event and managing the event. And that's maybe the first thing on there or one of the first things. They establish the date, then they get a permit because it's probably going to result in liability issues if something does happen. I think we're very lucky and very fortunate, nothing did happen. I know there was an incident with Wisconsin this past weekend where a musher and their dogs were hit by a snowmobile. And we want to avoid those kinds of things. So I think just stress, stressing with the event organizers that this needs to be one of the first steps that's taken.
Yeah. No, I think that'd be good to discuss too. And if it's, you know, giant blinking thing on the website when you hop on there right away or something, I don't know what. But, you know, there's obviously the events we know about and it's always the ones that you don't know about. So I think there's some balance of our own reaching out versus, you know, making it accessible for event planners to know, like, you need to do this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Madam Chair, one, one further thought, and again, I, I shouldn't say again, I don't know if this is appropriate, but we have a very strong and cohesive tourist industry. And perhaps there is further conversations with physical county that could happen to try to make sure that all of our events are, are getting taken care of as, as best they see. But, you know.
I think that's very appropriate. And I know I am on the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Group. That's something we can bring up there, Gunflint Trail Association as well. So I will do that on my end to make sure that the word gets out. All right. Well, I think that that is really all we need. I don't think there's any approval required at this point. Any further questions regarding the Gunflint Mail Run? Thank you both very much. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for keeping our roads clear. You've had a busy season so far.
Nice to get a little break this week.
Absolutely. Well, at this point, does anyone need a break?
Madam Chair, I'd appreciate a break. Thank you.
All right. We will take a five-minute break and we'll see you back here shortly. Thank you. And Tim Nelson isn't in the room, so we took a break?
We got our new process going now.
New year.
We're making Brady wait.
I'm here. I'll take a break too.
Go ahead, Brady.
Yeah, well, Towmaster's always been order up because they're the best.
Yeah, well, I never go to.
But it's been like six, eight months, not eight, ten, not a year and a half, yeah.
Great job, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, it was, it's kind of funny with some of that, you know, like we understand like, like consent agenda stuff, right? You know, but it is a good point when you're talking quarter of a million, half a million dollar things to be like, well, we should talk about it. Makes sense too.
I guess I'd suggest, just let me know what, what number triggers that so that I don't put it on consent if there's a certain threshold.
I don't think it's hard to be fast. I think it just, you know, in some cases, I mean, like a much smaller expense. If it's slightly under budget, that may be a situation where you can have that smaller, I think, on the rate.
Sure.
Where, you know, I'd be more comfortable with more expensive arguments. A little lower, it's nice to talk about, hey, it works every morning.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the kind of discussions really, not, he's less about giving more just sharing information about the process and how it made a difference from what works at the cost or availability, you know, equipment prime lines, that kind of thing.
Where did you camp then? You're in the D.O.
Duncan.
Oh, all right.
First, we got the first site to the left there, just kind of hustling because we weren't sure how many people were going to break the goal until we wanted that spot.
That's great. And this time you don't have to worry about a bear that are up there.
Yeah. Poor bear probably started that after they closed the boundary. Yeah, because we were out there in August, right before they closed the boundary, and that bear was working the campsite.
Yeah, they were. Everybody who paddles up there knows that bear. I paddle in campfire logs and it's just like, that bear just travels the portage, swims a little bit, visits everybody.
Yeah, and it's one thing if you know it and you've got some experience with it and you've got an idea of that, of the temperament of that bear.
Put your food up or you have.
Well, and those are always a must.
Bear resistant containers.
Yeah, but I mean, even, even at that, when you follow all the rules, when you see one and you don't, you don't know what the temperament of that bear is. You don't know if they're, you know, somebody that's going to cause a mischief or what's going to go on. I have experienced, you know, several different ones. Some of them, they're around and you see them and, you know, as long as they're finding what they want, they're perfectly happy. And others, yeah, it's, they're just into everything. It doesn't matter. And they're out there in the middle of the night making noise.
So valuable. But anyways, there is a tree. I think it's on Rose. I think it's west. But there was a cedar tree that's like 18 foot diameter, or sorry, circumference. And, oh, hey, right, right. But, but I've gone back looking for it and I can't find it. So I'm like, wow, where was that? Was it at the lake? Was it a different lake? Was it east of there? And then we paddled back and forth trying to find it and, ah, it's bad thing, so.
Where's that one tree straight?
Right. But I think, like, in my head, it was like, okay, there's the falls, there's the moisture and the mist from the falls, like that's maybe what's feeding it. But even with those thoughts, I just still can't find it. So, you know, keep an eye on it.
I see a giant cedar.
It's remarkable.
Very funny.
But in general, actually, how I avoid that area is just because of how busy it is.
Minus 30 weeded out a lot of people.
Well, how many were in your group then?
Uh, four. It was initially going to be six and two of them backed out for some strange reason.
Yeah, right, right.
He's listening to a podcast.
Oh, oh.
What's that? Joe's got a podcast.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So no, you were a joke.
Yeah. Can you come with us?
No, not very cool.
Yeah, it was exciting. It was very cool.
I've got limited winter camping experience.
I have winter camp.
The wild was 30 below.
But not.
I was a kid.
I was a kid and I had no equipment.
Well, we had, we, my dad nature, we had the equipment. And I got to say, I'd done it several times when I was a kid, but the thought nowadays doesn't even begin to. I mean, it's like, no, no links. I like, I like my, my warm house with fireplace and. Want to invite them back up front?
Maybe if I was 20 or something. Yeah, we had, yeah, we had, you know, we rent the hot tent from Stone Harbor and it has a little wood burner this corner. But the, you know, we're burning dry cedar. It goes out in the hour. And then, yeah, and then we brought a buddy heater too. And I put the propane tank outside, which you're supposed to do. Left row was, that stuff working in the middle of the night.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry.
You can come down after.
Air stores later. I'll stop by. It's part of being a taskmaster.
It's good.
We get it. All right. Well, everyone is back with us and is Auditor Powers on the line?
Madam Chair, I'm here.
Great. All right, we are back and we'll resume with our meeting after our short and interesting break. At this point, we would like to turn the meeting over to Auditor Powers.
And Brady, before you start, I just want to check with April. April, if you can let us know if the audio is coming through on the phone, that would be great.
Go ahead, Brady.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first item is a grant contract approval for a septic system at the airport. I'm sure you're all aware of this. The, the airport has needed a septic system for some time. It's been difficult to find contractors to complete those jobs. But this grant was available from the state and it got encumbrance approval on November 23rd. They did that in advance so that we could squeeze this in and get it done prior to the freeze up and the heavy snows, which the airport accomplished with Rod Roy's help. So this is a, fully a state grant, $30,457.87 and it's 75% of the cost. And I'll just leave it at that for questions. And I'll just leave it at that for questions.
All right, any questions for Auditor Powers? Commissioner Starley.
Brady, who's actually doing the septic system? Or did I miss this in the?
That, that was Jed Smith, I believe.
Oh. Yes.
Is that local?
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, he has a septic and excavating company that's located right across from Headstrom Lumber.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he is, when you do a septic, which I did myself this fall, he is one of those on the list that the Environmental Health Department gives you. And it was lucky that someone was available to do it. It was really a struggle this year, I know personally, to get one done, so. Really grateful they could get that in, and that was a squeeze, that was pretty late, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Auditor Powers? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills, is there support?
Starley's support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley, we have a motion and support. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now on to airport maintenance grant agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a, now it's a standard two-year agreement. They increased the amount a couple of years ago, and so now it's about forty-one thousand, almost forty-one and a half, each year for two years, and it covers seventy-five percent of eligible maintenance costs. It's coming to you late right now, they were, they were late coming out with their grants, and then they, they sent this one in early November, this is why I put it on, because some people might have been aware of that. And I simply was busy with bonding and abatements, et cetera, and I missed it. So, I just became aware of it a couple of weeks ago, and got it on the agenda now for approval. It's not, it's not late, there's no implications, but it could have been, could have been done a little earlier. So, that's why I put it on the, this agenda, in case there were questions on that. But just our standard maintenance grant, I ask for approval of that, again, by resolution.
All right, any questions or discussion? If not, I'd like a motion for the resolution for the airport maintenance grant.
I move.
Thank you, Commissioners Follison, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Auditor Powers.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move now.
I'm going to go back to YouTube now.
Have, have fun watching us. All right, we'll move on to item number nine, Administrator Yorki.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners and members of the public. The first item under my section is a request that we received also last year from the Laurentian Resource Conservation Development Group for, request for annual dues in the amount of four hundred dollars. It was the board's decision last year not to, to pay the dues, and I think the rationale at that point was that the county wasn't really getting the value from that, from that payment. So, again, you have the request letter in your agenda packet, and we're just seeking a decision on whether or not to, to pay that request.
So I would just like to indicate that I did do some research last year, and again, this year. I also talked to both our commissioner, former commissioner, and representative from Soil and Water, who had attended the meetings, they did not feel that they were productive meetings, particularly as it pertains to Cook County, and felt it really wasn't worth the time and the drive to Duluth. So I did want to share those remarks that they gave me, and I wonder if there are other commissioners that have other comments or remarks or questions.
Madam Chair, my only question is, do they meet during the year? I mean, uh, they just?
There, there is a meeting schedule, there is a new one that is posted for 2022. We have not been approached by the group, even though, you know, we've been with them in the past. So there has not been effective communication, which was one of the remarks that was shared by our former board member that was on that group. Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, I think, I think there's a lot of potential here, and it's something that I think would be a really good fit for Cook County, and so I'm discouraged to hear that it's not an effective group. But until it is, or until, you know, there's better communication, or a real clear path forward for, for us, I think, I think it's appropriate that we, we stay, stay out of it and try to put our energy towards, towards things that are more productive, unfortunately.
Absolutely, and I, you know, by visiting, I really support their mission and purpose, but would like to try to build a relationship, and in the future, if things change, reconsider.
And Madam Chair, if I may, we can join at any point, so if things change, we can, we can join up again.
Right. Commissioners Follison.
I motion to deny the request from Laurentian Resource Conservation for annual dues.
Is there a second to that motion? Support. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, there's been a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Administrator updates.
All right, so a few things on my list this morning. Last October, the board received a presentation from Tessa Melvin, who's with David Drown Associates, regarding options for compensation and classification study. And we have committed to our labor unions that we are going to be undertaking a class and comp study in the first part of '22, to look at our pay structure, to look at positions, and make sure that everything's aligned with what's happening in the market. And that's especially important now, as you know, because of the issues that we talked about earlier in the meeting, where there's a lot of churn going on in the employment market. A lot of people are moving from, from job to job, rates of pay are going up, and it's really important for the viability of our organization and our, and our ability to provide high-quality services, that we have staff who are appropriately compensated for their work. And so that's, that's really a big part of why we're doing this. I mean, the other thing is, the last time we did a comp study was five years ago, and it's recommended that you do a comp study every five years or so, just to make sure that your, your salary and benefits offerings are aligned with what's available in the market. So, this is just a good practice, a good business practice to undertake. And tomorrow, Leah Ekstrom and I are going to have a conference call with Tessa and David Drown to talk about steps to move forward, and I would expect to, I hope, to bring a contract proposal forward to the board at the next meeting, that would enable us to move forward. This, this study has been a topic of conversation in our labor union negotiations, and we are firmly committed to doing this work, and I know the unions are counting on it. So the sooner we can get the ball rolling, the better. So, that's, that's where that effort stands, and if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Administrator Yorki?
Madam Chair, I don't have a question, but I, my experience with DDA has been very positive, although I have had concerns about the comp study done by DDA, and so I'm not sure how, maybe it's a difference in expectations, maybe it's a difference in process. I'm not sure how to best address that. I have full faith and confidence in your abilities, and I know you've heard those concerns as well, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're as transparent as we can be, and that we include as many, as many employees as possible, or representation from the, the labor groups in this process. And so I just want to emphasize that that's where, you know, kind of my advantage is at this point, is the inclusive, inclusivity of, of the labor groups there.
Yes, and Commissioner Mills, I did hear the same comment that you heard about the, the concerns about one study that, that David Drown did, perhaps having restated a foregone conclusion.
Right.
Or having been based on a foregone conclusion. That's really not my interest at all. We want to make sure, again, as the leader of this organization, I want to make sure that our, our staff are receiving competitive wages and benefits, because we can't develop, or we can't deliver high-quality services if, if we're not offering competitive compensation. So that's vitally important, and I agree with you completely that we need to, this needs to be a very transparent process. We do need to engage staff throughout, so that they understand, for example, the comps that we're using to, to determine where we stand. And, and so that engagement is going to be a big part of how we do the study.
Great, that's wonderful to hear, and I just want as many people to hear that as possible.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Anything else, Administrator Yorki?
Yes, Madam Chair, the next thing I wanted to mention is that we do have an RFP drafted that I'm going to be sharing with the Building Committee, and also the, the Capital Advisory Committee, to recruit a firm to help us with the update of our capital improvement plan. As folks, as you all, and probably folks who are listening, may recall, about four years ago or so, we developed a CIP with assistance from Wold Architects. And we were looking at the possibility of working with Wold again on the update of the CIP, and we did get some feedback from, from our Budget Advisory Committee, that they felt it would be preferable for us to, to go out to request proposals. And so that's what we're doing. And I do want to get both the Budget Advisory Committee's feedback, and also our internal Building Committee feedback on the RFP before we send that out. But that's another front burner issue that, that we're going to be working on this, this year, because, Commissioner Hawkins, I've heard you say several times that we need a plan, and I couldn't agree with that more. We do need a plan that takes into account our fiscal constraints, that identifies the highest priority needs in terms of our building, our buildings, and that lays out a path for us to address those needs. So, that, that's something that will be coming forward in the next meeting or two.
Good.
That's very encouraging.
Related note, strategic plan, I did follow up with Roger Reinert. This is something that we had intended to get underway at the end of last year, and frankly, circumstances made that impossible, the staff departures. We just had too many holes in the net to really, to really move forward on that. And we're really in no different position now than we were back in the late fall, with, with lots of staff vacancies, people are spread really thin. And the development of a strategic plan is something that has to, if it's going to be a good plan, it has to involve a lot of staff input. And my concern right now is that we are just so, so thin, that putting one more thing on the plates of, of our departmental leaders and our frontline staff just would not be reasonable. It wouldn't be fair, it wouldn't generate a good outcome. So, I, I'm working with, with Mr. Reinert to determine a time that we could start that effort, perhaps around mid-year, maybe May or June, once these other two issues that I just talked about are kind of underway, and hopefully close to being resolved.
Madam Chair, before we, before we go any, any further, sorry to go back, it's just how my mind works sometimes. I heard, I heard you say, Mr. Yorki, just that, you know, every five years, it's, it's appropriate to do the comp study. I just want to clarify, from what I've heard in some of the AMC trainings, maybe it was two years ago, or three years ago, actually, the annual conference, it's actually three to five years, and so we're kind of on the tail end of that. And now, having gone through the labor negotiations once, and hopefully largely twice, it's interesting, because, you know, three-year contracts seem to be kind of the, the hope, or, or the kind of something we should, you know, ideally strive for. And, and I know the, the expectations for the comp study vary as well, and I don't know how appropriate that is to be either ahead of negotiations, or within negotiations, or timed, you know, timed with that. It's just an interesting set of numbers there, and so just something that we might want to consider as we, we move forward. Once we hopefully get all employees, or most, on kind of that same page with understanding that this is a fair process, and that we do have comparables that most can agree with, we hopefully won't have to do as in-depth of a study, and maybe we can do it more frequently, easier and more cheaply, to, to maybe keep it in line with our negotiation cycle as well. So, sorry to backtrack there, but it was just.
No, it's good.
A thought I had, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And you're right, it is three to five years, is the recommendation that I've heard, and I was just kind of.
Yep.
Briefing that a little bit. So, and mentioning the, the contracts, so we are getting close. We do have tentative agreement on one contract, and expect to shortly have tentative agreement on the second contract. I'm waiting to hear back from the, the second bargaining unit on its consideration of our offer there. And then, there's, there are ongoing negotiations with the third union. I'm not sure where we stand on that one. There, there's still some differences of perspective in, in the conversations we've been having there, but I'm hoping to hear back from that group as well. I would, at this point, it looks to me like I would be able to bring forward two, two contracts for board approval at the meeting on January 25th. Last year, we, we brought forward all three contracts, I believe, at the same time. I, and I don't know if there's a need or a benefit to do the same thing this time, but my, my feeling is if we have tentative agreements on two contracts, that we should probably go ahead and get those executed, so that's, that's my thought on that.
I certainly would agree with that, and, and look forward to those being on the next agenda.
Those are the, the big things that I'm working on, there are lots of little things, of course, always. We are starting to see, of course, like, the entire community, we're starting to see staff shortages related to what's going on with, with COVID, and that's something that we are working through right now. It is conceivable that this could impact our operations in terms of having to curtail hours, which I saw that the pharmacy up at the clinic, for example, has shortened its hours for that reason. And I can imagine that we might find ourselves in the same position. If that does become necessary, we'll be communicating with, with folks through our local media outlets, the News Herald, Boreal, the radio station, and also Facebook, to, to let folks know if those changes are necessary.
Any further questions on the updates? All right, we'll move on to employee concerns, Commissioner concerns. Any Commissioner reports or meeting updates? Commissioners, don't.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a few things, but I have something on the front burner right now, and that's because I've been receiving quite a few phone calls about the disparity situation that we're in. It's, for some businesses, it's really terrible. So, I did, there was a really good article in last week's Cook County paper, both by Auditor Powers, kind of trying to describe what's going on, it's so complicated. And then visit Cook County and the Chamber working together. So I did call Jim yesterday, and I understand there's a meeting this coming Thursday morning with Judy Erickson, who's our representative at the Legislature, and Senator Bach and Representative Eklund. And he said, if nothing else, could we email both Bach and Eklund to say, do something? And he said, "If nothing else, could we email both Bach and Eklund to say, 'Do something.'" So, if we all have time, just to send a short note off to them, however you feel about this. I'm not telling you how to feel, but just, you know, to say, "We're concerned." And I don't know if Administrator Yorki, if you're going to be involved in that, or you're working with Lake County also. And teamwork, I think, is really important in this situation. May not be able to do anything for this, for this year, but hopefully for the future, that this does not come around again for businesses. Okay, so I'll check that off. On to, Eller's really good workshop seminar coming up the first week of February. My calendar is open, and I am willing to look into it. With the variant going on, I'm not real sure. I did call down there on Friday. She said that there's no time limit as far as registering. They have a hotel room available for people. It is an overnighter. So, you know, with, with their topics of tax abatement and bond case studies and legislative updates and leadership, I really hope that I can squeeze it in in terms of weather and in terms of health. So, I did ask, you know, about how many people did she think would be coming? And she thought, "There again, because of all of this, maybe a hundred and fifty, so far registered." I said, "What kind of rooms do you have for this?" And she said, "They're quite large rooms, so you don't feel like you're crammed into a little space with a lot of people." So, that was reassuring. So, if I may, I'll just kind of put this on the agenda for the next couple of weeks and, and, you know, then maybe go ahead and have April make the arrangements for me to go down.
Right.
Okay, so, when we received the, the update from Assessor Bob to put aside a June date, I thought maybe we should also think about our dates with AMC, district meetings, conferences and all that. So, I do have a list of, you know, starting in March, going into April, June, September, and December. So, maybe I'll just send that off to April, and she can get it all up to us. It was put in, you know, if you could read the fine print in this little booklet.
Yeah.
That's where I took it from, was from AMC. So that we all get that on our calendars so that we can say, "We don't want to get in the situation we did last time with AMC in December" and then having to change it, and Brady was very accommodating on that. But that's a given. Always the first week of December is AMC conference. So, I think that's all I'm going to check off my list.
Well, and I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Starley, for stepping up with the Eller's presentation. I looked at that, being in conflict with our tribal relations training, and was really concerned that we wouldn't have anyone there. So, thank you for, you know, making an effort to do that and be there for us.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Other Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank the board for the work that we did in our organizational meeting. I did not realize the weight of last year until I now am sitting outside of the chair, vice chair seat. And I feel like a new man, and, and it's just wonderful. So, thank you so much for, for the work that you're doing and stepping up and, and serving. I greatly appreciate it. And taking on additional committees, I greatly appreciate that as well. And I just hope that we can, you know, continue discussions as need be, moving ahead if, if we find conflicts or if we, we see other needs or shuffling or whatever. I just, yeah, just very grateful, so thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else? Commissioner Hawkins?
I would just like to report of the extension committee meeting we had yesterday. And I'm just very excited. Sarah's going to be coming on board, back on board in a few weeks. And I think I want to recognize Sally Berg for her work up there and Julie working up there. And I'm just very excited about the possibilities for the extension services in our community going forward. I, I think we have a lot of hard work to do, but I think I'm, I'm just very encouraged, and I want to share that.
Well, thank you much, Commissioner Hawkins. All right. Commissioner Follison, anything? I'd just like to refer to our correspondence or memos that are on the agenda. We have something from Visit Cook County. And that came as a result of my conversation with Linda Jurick. As you recall, at our organizational meeting, we wanted to check out, first of all, if Commissioners Follison and Commissioners Starley, if that should be one position with Visit Cook County and the Chamber are separate. Linda really likes the idea of keeping them very separate, which is great. And then she also was very excited to see that Stacy had indicated that she, as a Commissioner, would love to be part of the Grand Murray Area Tourist Association. They have wanted to have somebody in that position, so we'll get all of those spots covered. She included the calendars, so we could get everything on our own personal calendars as well. So, I just wanted to explain why that was added to our board packet.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Starley?
Were we supposed to get the calendar?
It is attached to your agenda.
Oh.
It's the very last page.
Sorry, I did not get that printed out.
All right. We'll make sure you get that.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right. And Administrator Yorki?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to say, and I know this runs the risk of coming off as shameless flattery, but I, I wanted to say, Commissioner Mills, I'm glad to hear you say that you feel like a weight has lifted. And I also wanted to thank you for your steady, thoughtful leadership of this board over the last year. It's been really great working with you as Chair. And I'm just really happy with this whole board. We've got, you guys have a really great team. You've got really productive working relationships. And from my position as administrator, that's everything. You have a high-functioning board that works together well, that treats each other with respect. That just makes my job so much easier. So, Commissioner Mills, just wanted to thank you for your leadership again. Madam Chair, I'm really happy to have you in the chair position, too. I know you're going to do a great job. And just thanks to all of you for, for the work that you're doing and the way that you're doing it. It really makes a difference.
Thank you so much. I echo that, and, and I would thank my co-pilot here for being able and available to step in at any moment. All right. Anything else for Commissioner reports, meeting updates? We've talked a little bit about AMC and our tribal relations coming up in February. We've talked about our correspondence and memos. And now we'd like to move on to recognition of staff. We have some anniversaries. We have Adriana Brisson in the Auditor's Office for one year. Leah Ekstrom in HR, but with the county for a total of seven years now. Jamie Green in the Sheriff's Office, four years. Holly Schroeder, Recorder's Office, twenty-three years. Brian Silence in Maintenance, twenty-two years. It's probably felt like forty, given all that he's had to do. Nanette Silence in the Highway Department, eleven years. Brody Smith in the Recycling Center for four years. And April Zimmer, who keeps this group together and rolling, or in administration, three years. And then we have some January milestones. Martina Johnson in PHHS, fifteen years. Mitch Travis in Land Services, five years. And last but not least, K-9 Eddie, who's been with us for four years. Can we give K-9 Eddie some dog treats? I hope that's in the budget. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. If not, I take a motion to adjourn?
So, I move, Madam Chair.
All right. And we don't, all right, we have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Have a good day. All right.